Hello, everybody, and welcome to the May 6 Town Council informational work session. We begin by, I'll call the order, let the record read that the entire council minus Mr. Combo and Mr. Morris are present. Next, I'd like to ask little Johnny and his mommy to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you, everybody. If we could, I'd like to take a moment of silence for a young girl, Addison Donovan, who spent most of her childhood here in Chesapeake Beach, who lost her life on Easter Sunday. Thank you very much. Before we begin, my wife told me not to do this, but I'm going to do it anyhow. Today, May 6th, it's my mother's birthday. She's 86. I'm going to wish her, her name is Babe, so I'm going to wish the babe a happy birthday. You know, and she's still doing strong. And if you grew up in my household as a kid, you would have known that May 6th is also Willie Mays' birthday. So, we were baseball family, and we always celebrated them both at the same time. It's kind of funny because Willie never showed up, but we always say happy birth to him every year anyhow. First thing we have on the item here is to discuss the appointment of Jody Hoonstar to the Board of Appeals. Jody answered one of our calls for volunteers, and what I like to do, you know, under this administration is to have the council meet him before we, you know, put it on the agenda in two weeks. So, Jody, if you don't mind, now, council, this is not an inquisition here. This is, this is not a Supreme Court appointment or anything like that. This is a volunteer, a much-needed volunteer who's taking time away from his wife and son. So, Jody, if you don't mind, just, you know, come up and tell us a few, tell us whatever you want to tell us.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Jody Hoonstar. I was born in Vancouver, raised in PG County, Bowie area, Maryland. Went off to Colorado for college and came back here, and me and my wife settled in Chesapeake Beach maybe a year and a half, two years ago. And so, we're getting to know the town and trying to get involved.
What kind of work do you do?
I work for the U.S. Census Bureau out in Sutland. I am a geographer.
Well, I've already met with you, so I'll just say, I'll start with the Vice President and see if the council has any...
Nice to meet you. You and I actually have something in common.
Yeah.
I work for the U.S. Census Bureau in the geography division. I have a doctorate in geography. It's what I do.
Thanks.
So, welcome aboard. I noticed in your resume that you're fairly new to the census.
I worked as a contractor for a number of years, and after five or so years, they federalized me, so, knew it, knew in federal terms, yeah.
Awesome. Well, welcome aboard, and I hope you enjoy it, and thank you for volunteering.
Welcome also, and just share some thoughts on your interest in serving on the Board of Appeals.
I do not know a ton about the Board of Appeals. I had offered to join the zoning board, which I also know nothing of, but it seemed somewhat tangentially related to geography, so I thought, hey, maybe I can keep my mouth closed and learn a thing or two, and then hopefully, as time goes on, provide some expertise and some help.
Not a problem. That's how I ended up on the council. I didn't know a thing about it.
And he's a slow learner. Hey, that was a layup. Thank you, Larry.
Hey, Jody. How did you find out that there was a position available on the Board of Appeals?
The town email blast that goes out every week or so, something like that.
Okay. How long have you lived in town?
About a year. Hi, buddy. There you go. Let's see, yeah, so we've been here about a year and a half. We bought a house on D Street and 27th, and it was a fixer-upper, and we spent some time before this kid was born getting it fixed up, and then about right when he came was about, about when we moved in, so.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for him? Thank you.
Keith?
Yeah, thank you very much for volunteering. It's great. We need all the volunteers we can get, and I just want to say once again, thank you.
What kind of work do you do? I mean, like, typical project that you would work on?
For my professional job?
Yes.
It's probably the best equivalent is programmer. If that's, that's kind of what my day is, is sitting in front of a desktop computer and programming and a number of things.
All right. Thanks. I appreciate you stopping by. Thank you. You can all take, take your lovely wife and your son home and have a good night. Nice to meet you, Caitlin.
Everybody, thank you.
Yeah. Thanks again. All right, those were the easy questions. We're saving the harder ones for Laurie. Okay. The, next, we have discussed the appointment of Lori Blackwelder to the planning and zoning board. I must add, you know, she comes to us with a recommendation from Jeff Foltz, the chair. I understand he's even already put her to work, so, love that, Jeff. You know, so, if you don't mind, Laurie, same process.
Hello, my name is Lori Blackwelder, and I've been living at Chesapeake Beach this time for about two years. I am prior military, so I served eight years in the U.S. Army, and then I proceeded to follow my husband around the United States. We also did a tour in Europe shortly before moving here. And basically, I've been a stay-at-home mom and a volunteer for the last 15 years, and ironically, I'm going through the hiring process at the Census Bureau, so...
We rock.
Yes. So, I'm partway through that. Hopefully soon, I will be working, maybe with you. And I've been working with Derek on the Walkable Community Advisory Group. My main passion for joining his group and working on his group is working on recreational projects. I'm also, you know, interested in planning, you know, all kinds of planning, and I'm excited to potentially learn, you know, everything that's going on in the town, but my passion does lie with recreation.
Thank you. I'll go through the same process, start with the Vice President.
Yes, and you, I've read in here that you were heavily involved in the presentation that was given for the Walkable Community, right? That was really well done.
Thank you, thank you.
And just a side note for the Census Bureau, what area are you applying for?
I have been hired, but, you know, it's not all the way through the process as a program analyst.
Okay. All right. Yeah, if you have your knee a geographer, let me know.
I'm sure we probably will. We're dealing with mapping, so...
Yeah, you'll need us. Other than that, when you do talk about your vision beyond recreation, what is your vision for the town in terms of how you would like to see it change or grow, or even stay the same as a small town?
Well, I think that there's a lot of information out there that describes what I think would make our town really nice, and it's found in, like, sustainable community examples. And these are examples, you know, live, walk, work type of examples. I use Europe as my model because I loved living in Europe. I thought it was great. You could ride your bike anywhere, you could walk anywhere. Within the towns, you know, they kept the big business to the outskirts, and they kept the little, the little shops on the innards, so it didn't get too crowded. For our town, you'd have to, you'd have to be a little bit different because we do, we do come to an end with our roads, so you can't build up too much in here, or else you're going to get too many traffic problems because there's only a few ways out. So, I would just say that, you know, there's some sustainable communities that are very robust and very dense, and I wouldn't want that for our community because the infrastructure wouldn't support it. But other than that, the idea of the way most of those communities work, I think, would be great in our town, and I think if we really capitalize on our natural assets, like the bay and Fishing Creek, I think we could have a really awesome, beautiful town that lots of people would like to come to, and it'd be great to live in, and it already is, but I can think of lots of ways to improve as well.
Great answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry?
Well, welcome. I'm sure you realize that you would be joining planning and zoning in a particularly critical time, given the comprehensive plan that's underway, and there's obviously lots of things that you just touched on that need to be reflected in that updated comprehensive plan. Of course, Councilmember Partik and I served on planning and zoning before we came on the council, and Councilmember Morris and I co-chair the Economic Valuh Committee, so there's a lot of tie-ins with what planning and zoning does. But as far as I'm concerned, if Jeff says okay, I'm good.
And the only thing I'll add before I go to Greg is that when I met with Lori, we went over the survey results that were in the town newsletter that expressed how the people feel, which, to be honest with you, I feel the way the town does, and I was glad to know that we talked it through and that we were like-minded as well, and that's just, that's one of the reasons I'm putting her forward. Sure.
Coming recommended by Jeff is definitely kudos there. I know your heart's in the right place. Do we know why Susan actually ended up stepping down?
Well, she hasn't yet, I don't think, but that's...
That's who we're replacing, Susan?
No, actually, no. We had a vacancy. We're replacing a vacancy.
My understanding Susan has resigned.
She did.
I've heard, yeah, but that's separate to this. This action took place before that action.
If this is to fill not a potential future vacancy from Susan, this is a vacancy that exists now.
That's correct.
Right, right. I don't have any other questions. I have a couple of questions for you on this side afterwards.
Sure.
But, thank you.
Well, thank you as well for volunteering to do this. I was at the Walkable Community presentation that you and Derek and others did. I thought it was really well done also, and I feel like I have a pretty good idea of where you're coming from, from your answers already here, as well as through that, and I look forward to your continued work on the planning and zoning.
Thank you.
I was really happy when Jeff reached out to me and said that you were interested in volunteering for this because, you know, she's worked in our, for a year now, and, you know, what you've seen in our presentation wouldn't be anywhere near that if it wasn't for Lori. I mean, she was really the catalyst behind most everything that we did over the last probably nine months, so I think she's going to bring an energy, a passion, and competence to the planning and zoning board that I think they're going to be very happy to have, so I'm very happy that you're offering to volunteer for that group. I do have a beef with Jeff, though, if he's already tasking her.
Actually, I do not know if he's tasked.
He's a higher source.
We're going to have to talk about that because I'm still tasking her now, but no, Lori's fantastic. She really is, brings, you know, she talked about her world travel, and she really brought some of that experience to our group, and, you know, and I think this is going to, nothing but help her as well with planning and zoning, so very happy that you're, put your name in for that.
Well, you have a good evening.
Okay.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move right down to the next item, which is the water park food supplier. Holly, do you have, are we going to do this here?
So, every year, Marilyn reaches an agreement with a food supplier. Basically, it's not a contract per se, but it's an agreed bulk amount of food items that are purchased for the season in an effort to get the best pricing. So, I'll turn it over to Marilyn and let her go through her summary she's provided to Town Council.
Yes, basically, we looked at three different food suppliers, and the reason that I'm recommending Cisco is not just so much for the pricing and the cost savings, but really for the resources that will be available to us and the consulting and the business that they offer. I've been doing this for 10 years. I feel like I, I've learned a lot, but I really know that they're professionals, and they just have so much to offer. They're also giving us, offering us a 5% rebate on every single, they, we could choose to do it at the end of the season, but I would rather do it per invoice because I think that makes more sense than everything will be in the right fiscal year, et cetera. Do you have any questions?
I'll start with Derek. Do you have any questions in this?
You've worked with Cisco before?
No. We've never been able to because we, they only deliver twice, two to three times a week in Chesapeake Beach, and every year, I've mentioned them on here, but I could never entertain them because we didn't have the freezer capacity to do so.
Well, that was the lead into my second question, was the deliveries. So, every, you're expecting deliveries every two to three days from them under this contract?
Which will save us a lot of costs and inventory and, you know, just all that you have to do with every single food order. We will only be ordering once or twice a week now, which will be a lot nicer.
And I know we've purchased some additional storage units for you with, you know, this year and I think even in the past, but, so you're not expecting any issues storing foods?
No. Our freezer, the freezer that we, that you guys voted on will be in within the next week or two. It's coming.
All right, good. Thank you.
I just want to be sure I understand one thing. You had mentioned a 5% rebate. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Yes, they're offering us with no strings attached, I don't have to sign an agreement. We don't have to sign any kind of agreement. I don't mean me, but the town doesn't have to sign any kind of agreement, which we, which really works out to our benefit because if one vendor, for some reason, disappoints us, we can always switch. We don't have to stay with them, but because we're spending over a certain amount of money, I'm coming to you all and explaining to you what we're doing.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, that clears it up for me.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
I don't think I have any questions. Derek asked the one question I had, and that was regarding the service, because I think I remember last year, it was an issue because they would only deliver a certain number of times per week, and, but with your expanded storage, it sounds like the whole effort there is going to be a little more efficient, and thus will save a little money too, right?
That's correct.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Not sure if this was part of the answer to Keith's question or not, but your handout here says non-commitment for the 5% rebate. What does that mean?
That means that they're not asking us to sign an agreement with them for the entire year. They're just saying on each order, they're going to give us the 5% discount, whereas in the past, we have had vendors with different, you know, different types of items that we've ordered where they'll give us a rebate at the end of the year, like Pepsi, for example. We signed a three-year agreement with them to get $4,500, which they gave us $4,500 upfront because we signed a three-year agreement. They're giving us 5%, up to $5,000 for as much as we order from them, so we don't have to stay with them to get that 5% each order.
Okay, but if it's a non-commitment, can they revoke that at any time?
No, they can, they, and I just sent the agreement over to Holly for Alyssa to look at, but basically, it's win-win for us because we don't have to sign an agreement with them, but as long as we, as long as we keep buying from them, we can get that 5% discount.
Oh, I understand. I'm just expressing the concern that if it's not in writing somewhere on the 5% rebate...
The 5% is in writing.
It's in writing.
The 5% is an agreement, but it doesn't say that we have to stay with them past one order. Yes, the 5%, the 5% is in...
We're good.
An agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Just trying to, this is definitely not my area, but with our previous food vendors, it sounds to me like what you're saying, this is an order-by-order relationship, so that, is there any risk of them ending that relationship? It's not like we're signing a year-long lease or agreement. So, do you see any risk in that? I'm fine, I'm actually fine with this. I'm just wondering because it...
We've never signed an agreement with any of our food invent, food suppliers since I've been here, and the reason is, is because we, some of the food items are commodities. They can't keep that price. Most of the items, they will keep till the end of the season unless there's some, something that happens, happens in the world that changes the pricing, and then, of course, they have to change it. But that's one of the reasons I like not signing an agreement, because they, they've promised to give us this, and they know that they're, that we can leave at any time.
Okay. That was my question, then, on the freezers, and then if you were comfortable having two deliveries a week as opposed to what you had, so, we're good.
All righty. Thank you, Marilyn. WRTP, design and install sluice gate valve?
Sluice gate.
Sluice gate valve and safety catwalk in effluent wet well. Did you, you wanted to just give us a real brief overview of the...
Yes, back in 2017, we installed a new bar screen down in the wet well, and when we did that, we took away my access point to where we actually plugged the flow coming into the plant and performed a bypass, so we could work on my pumps that are actually down in the wet well, the submersible pumps. The other access point where we could do, perform this bypass is a manhole in the parking lot, and it's like 25 foot in the ground, and we did it one time, and I told myself, I'm not sending a man down in that manhole again. It's just too unsafe and scary, and he's standing nearby himself trying to put a plug in. So, what this, I put into Capital Projects was to install a catwalk to where we could safely get down near that wet well to where that bar screen is and install a sluice gate valve, where it's a valve that bolts to the wall, and you just put a plate down into it over the, the infall pipe, and that acts as a plug, so we could go back to the manhole and just put hoses down off our dry primes and then pump all our effluent or effluent up to a distribution box, bypass that wet well, and perform all the maintenance that we have to do on the pumps safely, and also perform maintenance on the bar screen. So, we just need a safer way to do these bypasses, and we find that even on cleaning it, we have to do a bypass. If we lose a pump, we have to do a bypass, and if we lose a pipe down there that has to be repaired, we have to do a bypass, so the more bypasses we do, we get things clean, and we can repair a lot of the piping to last another 20 years or so, and I foresee that coming up because the piping down there has been there for a while. That's the gist of why I need this.
Okay. Any questions, council?
So, but going to the cost, it's going to not exceed $25,000, which is fine. This is going to be shared with our partners, correct? So, that's fine.
Correct.
And it's coming out of the 2019 budget. I know we're only a month or so, you know, July 1st, obviously. Is that soon enough for you?
I'm going to try my best to sneak this in. I have got people working on preliminary designs and getting things ready, and then I get three quotes, and once I know, you know, what we need for measurements and type of materials and...
Yeah.
I'm going to get it in here, see? I'm going to try my best.
No, that's, that's fine. Thank you. That's all I have.
Larry?
A couple of observations, I guess. One is, you mentioned about the safety catwalk, which is critical, and I totally and completely agree with you, we should not be sending people down into the manhole to do that. That said, I also noticed here that the new sluice gate valve will have a manual gate operation. Why wouldn't we want to put a motor on there so we don't even have to go down on the catwalk?
Well, I don't know if this is, I have to look into it, but I don't know if it's legal to put a valve, a motorized valve or something that can be closed to stop all your flow into a wastewater or a water reclamation plant. So, by doing a manual thing, people have to go down there and just act like you're putting a plug into the pipe and blowing it up to do the bypass. The sluice gate, by putting the plate in manually, would act as the same thing as you're putting a plug in.
I understand, but I'm, I'm still looking at, even with the catwalk, we're sending somebody down there, and effluent manholes are notorious for having nasty stuff, you know?
Well, this wet well's not enclosed. It's all open. We have steps that go down, and it's all wide open. It's just, once we get to the bottom of the steps, it's unsafe from that point because we have to go over the handrails, and we'll build a ladder and steps or something, and then get to a catwalk to walk on safely.
I'll defer to your judgment on that one, but I just, just saw that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's doing the, you said somebody's already designing it. Who's working on that? And then I heard you say that, like, we're going to, you're going to put that out for bid?
Well, we're going to get estimates, so it's going to be, the total project would be not to exceed 25, so it's 25,000. So, there's some, several components within that 25,000 of design work and construction as well. So, yes, we'll have estimates and proposals, not necessarily a sealed bid, though.
Okay. Everything that we're going to do, that you're proposing to do, legally, we can do, right?
Yes.
Nothing that could get us in trouble there? So, are there any inspections involved with the work that you're proposing, other than our own?
No, it's mostly constructions, but it's not any electrical going to be done down there because it's a wet area. It's no plumbing. It's no major building modifications. It's just installing a catwalk and a valve.
We'll, we would self-inspect that, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you, John.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Is that area considered a confined space?
I guess by the depth of it, it probably is a confined space. It's open, but it's like 28 feet...
Right, but even though it's open, if it's within, you know, the confines, it would classify it as such.
Right. It's 25, it's 28 feet down, so it's open, but it's, once you get down so far, it's considered a confined space.
So, two-man, two-man teams, you know, probably escape air?
Right. We have, we have...
It's all regulated.
Right. We also have the air, the air compressor type things that we run hoses down.
Supply air, right.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, I'm kind of going along with Larry. Why are we not considering an automated system where you don't have to send folks down into confined spaces?
Well, I tell you the truth, the other reason, the other reason I don't want to do that, it's too easy, and if trainees, operators come and go and do things, and they, you know, they see a valve and they, we exercise a valve, I'm just eliminating processes that they could close it, not know it, and, oh, what is this for? Let me hit this button, and I, I just don't want to take that chance.
I mean, conversely, how many of the staff are trained in confined spaces? Because that's, I mean, that's a formal training program.
We have now eight, eight down there, and we have one, two, three operators and an assistant superintendent, and then the rest are trainees, so we do safety classes in-house on all that, and I have a pretty good, my assistant down there is an ENT...
Right. I assume the state has a certification for confined spaces?
Right. He's got the certifications, and he does all the training and stuff for our guys and stuff, and we got all the equipment, so...
And there's other confined spaces within the plant?
Just in the manholes, not too much rest in the different areas, because we got rid of most of chlorine. We only have some chlorine left, but it's, it's a type of liquid chlorine that we mix for when we use the purple water, but that's in a building, and it's all ventilated and stuff.
Yes, yes, so what I'm getting at is you have eight staff who are trained in confined spaces, which time and resources to, to keep, to train and then keep that up, and is it more efficient to, if this is what's driving the need to have confined space training for your folks, maybe we look at something, then, and we don't, you're saving that effort by going to more automated systems. I guess the, what, besides that, what... I'll be honest, I don't know the first thing about sluice gates, so I, I can't help there. But it just, the whole thing read to me as, as just in time reengineering. Is it, is it kind of what this is? Just like designed to solve a problem that, you know, was caused by design of some, something else? I mean, it's, it's just kind of how it reads to me is, um, this is not a typical, um, you know, an engineering design that, that would go into that.
Well, it was my original application point when we have to do a bypass. To bypass the pumps or the pumps all break down, we have no way to pump it into the plant. And we have to use our dry primes, but you have to plug it up to have the water flow up into the manhole in order to keep the pumps going. If not, the flows, you can, I can have two dry primes in it and the flow, it might not catch at all. It's still coming into the wet well. So that's why we have to plug it to build the level up so we can just pump it all out into, bypass everything and go up to another distribution box. But the original, my plug that we used to do that was down in the wet well. It was fairly easy. We had to drain it down a little bit and then have a guy go down there in boots and everything and just stick it in there and blow it up. But by putting a bar screen over that pipe, we had, we no longer had access to it. We couldn't get that, get the plug in. So we tried to do it in that manhole and it's just too unsafe for that. So I want to go back to that and this time make it safer to where the operator can get right down there easily. Doesn't have to put on the boots, just go down there and drop it down and we're done.
How often do you have to do this?
Well, we have, we have some things coming up in the influent pipe. It looks like I might be losing a pipe. It's a eccentric valve, which is an off-center valve in the bottom of it. It hooks to the, to our, one of our influent pumps. We've had one rusted out before and it looks like we have one that's starting to get a hole in it. So that's going to be coming up. Plus the main thing is we'd like to schedule every six months or so to have that wet well cleaned out of grit. Everything that comes in down into it that the bar screen doesn't get, it ends up down there clogging up the pumps. So we like to take it down every now and then, bring in a vector truck, have him come down and then we plug it. And then he can clean that whole area up and we'll save some more time on the pumps. Because the more grit and rags and gravel and everything gets in it, it eats all the pellets up. And these are $25,000 pumps apiece, so.
Sounds like a couple of times a year, two or three, few times a year, that you would go down and, and have to have someone go down and?
At least, minimum twice a year, yes. To have it cleaned and plugged, but maintenance, maintenance on the bar screen, just to get access to it. And, you know, if anything happens electronically, because they're variable drive pumps. So if we lose anything on frequency vari- variable drives, we don't have access to the pumps. Then we're down on pumps we can't pump. The main thing is it's scary, is that if we lose the pumps, we can't take the flow in. We gotta figure out a way to get it into the plant. So we have dry primes at the plant, but to effectively work that bypass, you have to plug that flow up. So the dry primes will keep pumping it. And that's the scary. We, we do have the backup with the dry primes. We can, I'll figure something out how to get it around. But we're just eliminating also the, of having any breakdowns. We got backups on backups, so we can keep it moving. And that's the, the thought of having this thing.
I, I'm sure you've done the research, but I, I, I would think it would be worth exploring, you know, what options they are to automate that? Just to alleviate having to send folks down there, even if it is a couple of times a year. And if it's not feasible, it's not feasible. But it seems like, uh, I, I would think I would like to see the options to that, you know, just. Infor, I mean, even informally, just because it seems like there's, might be some better ways to do this in my limited knowledge. And I, I kind of defer to my professional colleague over here who knows a lot about this, but.
Well, the only problem with that also is if it's down in the, near the wet well, it would have to be up top. And it's, it's like 30 foot for a shaft to go down onto it for a different valve. Even a sluice gate with the, with the manual, um, turn wheel, it would have to have a long screw on it that goes, you know, 30 some foot down into the, to get to the sluice gate. That's, that's, that's electric running way down there to that actuator and to the water, near water and.
John, could we put together what a scenario could look like?
Sure.
For using that option, just cost, maybe it looks like that's what council is looking for.
Okay.
And John, I don't want to mention, only because I've been down there to help them a few times. I just want to throw out to the group is manual or electric, when you shut that, he's going on this catwalk. Someone's going down in there either way. You're gonna maintenance the bottom screen on the sluice gate, you're gonna maintenance the hooks on the pumps. So by making it electric, you're not eliminating someone going in the hole probably three out of four times. Is that true? Because, I mean, if they're gonna maintenance the bottom of that bar screen, even if this sluice gate was hitting a button, you still got a man right there in the hole.
Right.
I just want to throw that out there because I've been that man in that hole down there.
Hey, very good. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I'll work you something up on that.
Bulk trash RFP, I'm gonna let Holly give you an overview on this, but just to add, add two cents if you will. One of the reasons that this caught my attention some time ago and I've, you know, supported it is as you'll read, it reduces the risk of employee injury, which, you know, it also frees up employees' time to do other work around town. But when you reduce employees' injury, you, you know, A, you know, our valued employees are hurt, which is the most important thing of all. And secondly, they ain't working when they're hurt. So anyhow, I'll, I'll let Holly give a more professional overview, but I wanted to just throw that out there.
So that's correct and that's why we did budget for this, this fiscal year. We're, we're a little late in, in making this RFP happen. But we, we did put it out and we feel the results were successful. We put this bid out on Maryland, e-Maryland Marketplace and sent it out to 101 bidders. It was not as attractive, obviously, without the full contract for trash and recycling removal services in town. So we only actually received one, one bid result, which is from our current provider. The goal is to go back out to bid next year along with North Beach around the same time. So, um, the current provider is servicing both towns currently. So the thought is that it would make for a little more competitive environment if, if we went out around the same time and, and had two towns for, for bidders to bid on the trash. So that's, that's the plan moving forward. But for right now, we have the bulk trash services. And we've kind of put some time into calculating what it's actually costing our Department of Public Works currently now. We have a salary cost of approximately $30,000 a year with two public works employees going three days out of the month. Really spending all day collecting bulk trash and picking it up and then bringing it back to the yard. In addition, there's additional time that public work staff has to re-maneuver the large items in the dumpsters, crush the items, use large equipment to do that. So it's, it's not just a pickup and, and it's gone. So they're spending a significant amount of time with bulk trash. We also are paying tipping fees for the container that's at the public works yard, which approximately is about 15,000 a year. And I have in, in my memo to you that it totals about $45,000 a year in costs. But then I realized that actually didn't include the equipment fees for running all of the large equipment, gas, maintenance, which we had calculated at about $10,000 for the year. So we really have a total cost of about $55,000 for public works to collect bulk trash. And that's not even counting in any opportunity cost of projects that, that public works could complete if we were outsourcing this service. So the, the proposals in the RFP, we did offer the option to see if there was any cost savings to differ from our current schedule, which is that we pick up the first, second and third Thursday of the month and we separate that by south side, north side and west side of the town. The result that we did receive provided substantial cost savings to the town to do all bulk trash one day a month. So they would canvas the entire town. Residents would still call town hall and schedule for their pickups. So we would still have an idea of what is being collected. We would still be the ones that are talking to residents and identify what items might not be possible to pick up to mitigate those, those concerns and dealing with the residents one-on-one. We requested some itemized pricing and I've outlined that for you in page three. So part three A and part three B are the two options that, that we were looking at. And that is the alternate schedule of once a month, the entire town. And when Jay and I had reviewed this together, we're actually leaning more towards part three B, which includes the tipping fee as well. So it's an all-inclusive price that we do not have to worry about itemizing a tipping bill later. The cost of tipping is continually increasing. It's very difficult for us to reconcile tipping tickets when a lot of times the trash gets taken to the dump at a day that is different than when it's actually picked up. So we're, we're trying to eliminate some of that vagueness that we currently have. So at this moment, we're, we're recommending option three B at 57,305 a year.
Derek, any questions, sir?
So how, how is this budgeted? I mean, did we plan for this in the 2020 budget?
In the 2020 and 2019, yes. Yes, so we could start this immediately.
Then as far as the, so one day a month, so that's a reduction in the services that we provide to everyone. But is that, is that a set day a month? And the reason I ask is, as an example, Christmas season, you know, typically the trees are, are, if I remember correctly, trees are, are trees considered?
Trees are not included.
Trees are not included.
Bad example then, but.
And just to clarify, it's actually not a reduction in services. So right now, every citizen has the opportunity of bulk trash being collected once a month. So that stays the same.
Oh, that's right, because it's different sections of town.
Right, so there's no reduction in services.
You're right, you're right. Yeah, good point. So, but it would be a set day every month?
Right.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
I don't think I have any questions at this point. I appreciate you explaining that. I was having trouble with, uh, page three and interpreting that. So just to be sure I'm clear, uh, part three B then is one day per month, 57,305 is the, the projected cost for that.
Correct, which includes all the, the tipping, which is about 15,000 for the year.
All right, thank you.
I don't think I have any questions. You've done a good job. I like, uh, how you looked at some other options to see if we can save money doing some different ways. That's all pretty, it's great. I can't help but ask, did Stuart recuse himself from the meeting tonight?
No, I think it's his wedding anniversary.
Oh, I got you. Yes, I'm not.
Our sources recused Stuart.
Yeah, yeah, I just, okay, I, I don't have any questions about it. I, I know you've been working on this for a while and we've actually discussed parts of this before, so I'm good.
Just clarify for me on page three, on the part A, all four items say no bid. What?
So we, we had some uncertainty if our current contractor was going to perform the extension. Yes, we had some uncertainty if they were going to actually perform the extension for our one-year option. So we had to unfortunately include those scope, that scope of work in the bid. And once we did that, they agreed to perform. And no one wanted to submit a price for that service, knowing it was going to be going back out to bid very soon.
And since Southern Maryland was the only one who bid this, they did not include the bid for the part A because they're already doing it?
They're already doing it. And the other bidders, we actually got quite, quite a nice interest in our pre-bid meeting.
Yeah.
When they thought it was the entire town.
Yeah, understand.
So they were not comfortable submitting bids, knowing it was for budgetary.
Do this jointly with North Beach.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I got it. So what, what we're saying is what was $55,000, 45 plus 10,000 for gas and whatever. So for 2,000 more, we'll have the same level of service and say potential workman comp issues through any sort of injury that might occur to our staff while they do this work, right?
And almost 600 hours of public work, works time a year.
Yeah, but that's including in the way in the 50, that's including the 55,000 and that's your externality. That, yeah, I understand that's your externality. There is just one thing, just because it's who I am, that I just want to point out, I'm fully supportive of this. I think it's a great idea. I like the idea of going out to bid jointly with North Beach next year. I think it's a great idea, especially if it leads to cost savings. But me just being who I am, um, I just want to point out this as public works to be focused on streets, sidewalks, facilities and water and sewer connections. And I'll always be of the opinion that water and sewer connections and any sort of labor and work done with that infrastructure ought to be billed to the utility fund. And I'm just always going to say that because I believe that the utility fund ought to reflect, reflect the actual work involved along with the actual water and sewer. And that's all, but no, I'm totally supportive, but I think it's a good idea.
Thank you Valerie. And yes, sure, I was in the middle of thanking Holly, but yeah. You can thank her when you're done.
Well, I, I know that the outreach was great and I don't know who came to the pre-meeting. But, um, there are a limited number of service providers for this service. It's not like, you know, shopping around, you know, food services and things. I mean, folks that can legitimately service the town in this capacity, very limited, so, yeah. These guys are like the most part of us. They were willing to come all the way down here and do that really, but they didn't bid though.
Because we were only offering bulk. They didn't bid just because we were only offering bulk. They were very interested if we were offering all the services of the town. So they'll be back, I'm sure.
Yeah, um, and just looking forward with any of those companies that aren't based in Southern Maryland. I know that, I know both of these guys, they're up there off of Kennelworth, I think is where their main is. And that would just be to be careful about folks that are, you know, further removed from the county. I'm just, you wouldn't want to have issues with them down the road and, and we're not getting the service that we need. And then you're mid-stride and you're in contract with them. You know, in other words, I would be open to paying more for somebody that was close, that we knew that was reliable and we knew they weren't going to have any problems. If you had competitive bids with somebody that was from, a company that was from out of county, you know, then the references really come into play even more. Yeah, that, that's all, thank you.
Want to add something?
Yeah, yeah, just, um, you know, I was just thinking, I think it also might benefit the town by having this one day a month where it's a set day. Like the first Thursday of the month or whatever it's selected. I think it'll reduce some confusion that may occur and I think it's, you know, and then let's assume that maybe the town council votes positively for this. Then, uh, you know, like obviously a newsletter article would be a great, you know, way to sort of get it out there.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I say one thing on that?
Please.
Um, so real quick, give you some history. Started with town, 2006, there were 1,600 water and sewer accounts, because I read the meters, that's how I know. Now there's like 23. We used to get a dumpster at my shop every two to three weeks. Now we get one minimally every pickup and sometimes two. And that's smashing a 40-yard dumpster with a backhoe. So it's, the load has increased substantially. So I brought one list with me, it's 52 stops. This is one-third of the town. And you know, you get a bed, a sofa chair, a washer, three of them. So it adds up. And like Holly said, the guys, someday someone's gonna slip, someone's gonna hurt. And like Holly said, the guys, someday someone's going to slip, someone's going to hurt, knock on wood that hasn't happened. So it's cost-effective, it saves the staff, and it never fails, it's like a snow day on a Wednesday, they've been out all night, and then bulk trash Thursday, so to not have that frees us up to do a water main break, different things. The other thing I was going to say, so some of that money's a wash. You're not going to see Public Works discount, because we're working on this instead of that. But you will see the reduction in dumpsters at our shop, which we're getting a dumpster a week. I did the math, like thirteen thousand five. We're still going to need some dumpsters, because we still do leaf and land, we're still going to do the Christmas trees, we still have some waste from the nature of our work, but we're going to save the town ten to twelve grand just in the cost reductions of the dumpsters. We changed a backhoe hose today, a steel line and a flex line from smashing a dumpster, which was like forty-three dollars for the hose, but took a guy about seven hours to put it in there. So all those little things you'll never see, we're going to save, and we're going to use that equipment what we bought it for out in the street, instead of smashing trash. I just want to throw that out there. That's my selling point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council lightning round. Derek?
All right, uh, tentatively, uh, Walkable Communities Meeting on Monday. Uh, I'd actually like to have, talk with you briefly after we're done, Holly, uh, just the status on that. We'll determine if we still need to have that meeting, or we can postpone. And the other thing, uh, you know, we, we get, we have a number of legal items that we've been briefed on over the last six, eight months, and, and appreciate the updates on, on the one that we get, uh, via email, but, uh, there's, there's some other ones that we haven't heard on, heard an update on in a while, and perhaps, uh, you know, in the May, after the May meeting, or maybe in the June work session, we could get an update, the one in the New Jersey. Yeah, maybe we could get.
Sorry, I wasn't following what you're.
Maybe we can get an update on, on the scope of, of what our, our legal items are, because it seems like we haven't heard some, a little bit on, or any updates on some of those, but.
We've had a lot of waiting on, on dates, but we do have.
And it may just be that, but, you know, it'd be good just to get an update.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, announce, this is in the email blast, but, uh, it's coming up next week, so I wanted to give it another shout-out here. May fourteenth, six-thirty, uh, there'll be a presentation, by Merrick Topolsky from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, uh, horseshoe crabs, the blue bloods of the bay. So he's going to be talking about the, um, biology and of blue, uh, horseshoe crabs, horseshoe crabs, uh, in the bay, and how we, what residents in the town can do to help conserve them if they, and to appropriately rescue them, if they find them upside down on a beach or in the rock, uh, riprap, that kind of thing. So, uh, I hope you all can make it and, uh, spread the word. Thank you.
Um, Mayor, can you correct me if I'm wrong anywhere here, but, um, the next council meeting, we are planning a presentation of a, a custom quilt that's been made, um, for, uh, Dr. Mike, Mike Schisler, the principal of Beach Elementary School. Uh, and it's basically to commemorate everything that he's done for the town and our kids over all these years. Um, it seemed better than a plaque. Um, it's a beautiful quilt, um, and there's a, there's a, a panel on it where it's, uh, dedicated from town council and the residents here. So I just wanted to let everybody know that, um.
And it's a secret.
And it's a secret. Uh, well, yeah, well, have a few, have a few guest speakers, just to let everybody know there. Um, the guy's amazing. I kind of picture him ending his tenure, basically passing the baton off when the new school, school was built. Maybe he won't make it that far. Um, he might make another year. I kind of see him finishing that school out. I kind of envision that. Um, but he's, uh, some of my favorite meetings have been when the kids have been here with him, and some, the things that, that I remember the most about some of these meetings are things that the kids have said, that they've learned under his tenure. So, uh, both of my kids graduated there, um, and I'm really looking forward to that. Um, and if anybody, if any of my colleagues have, um, any special, somebody that wanted to speak on, you know, during then, um, we do have three or four, uh, guest speakers, so might speak thirty seconds or a minute or something. Just let me know, um, and we can organize to have them come in too, um, so. Great, thanks.
And I'll be speaking as well. Please, sir.
Two things. One, uh, I'll bring this up at the full council meeting as well, but as many of you know, we hosted, uh, a group of travel writers here in town on April twenty-sixth, and I thought it was very successful. They seemed to enjoy the town. Uh, the mayor, through Bobby Abner, treated them to crabs that night. They seemed to have a good time doing that, so much so that they said that they're going to be back. Come see us again.
They've already seen articles in the newspapers.
I have seen some articles in the newspaper. Uh, they went out on, uh, one of the headboats the next day fishing, and I saw an article about that, so, you know, the more publicity we can get, the better. Last thing I had is just a reminder for my colleagues, uh, June fifteenth, Moonlight Cruise is the one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary celebration, so sign up early.
Valerie?
Yep, just a quick update on the dragon boat, um, for End Hunger. It's Saturday, June eighth. So far, we've raised one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, and I'm absolutely thrilled that every person up here has donated or will be donating, and that's wonderful. Thank you. It's really appreciated. We have the boat just about full, um, twisting another arm or two from our favorite John over there. Um, maybe get another, uh, wastewater treatment plant fellow, or lady, or someone from Public Works, some more. Um, but we have like three spots open. Oh, and. We want it for another year, yeah, and I'll find out when I should return that to, uh, End Hunger. But other than that, things seem to be going well, and I want to thank Holly for all of her support and help on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it?